Second momentarily. But since we have a call, we'll move forward with the Pledge of Allegiance and then I'll be looking for an adoption of the agenda. Mr. Ashford Hughes, it's your night if you wouldn't mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Do we have an amendment to the agenda or do I have a motion for an adoption?
I have an amendment.
All right, Mrs. Tyler, can we put her on screen, please?
Sir, I've moved to add COVID leave discussion under governance issues after the resolution.
So you want to add action item number three and make it a board discussion on COVID?
COVID leave for teachers.
Okay, so Mrs. Tyler has recommended or has requested that we have a board discussion around COVID leave for teachers. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Four, five, all right, we have a motion passes, so we will add a board discussion on COVID leave for teachers after the equity resolution. All right, with that amendment, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
All right, do I have a second? All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, seems unanimous, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to awards and recognitions. Dr. Battle, please tell us a bit about the MNPS Grow Your Own Teacher Development Initiative.
Let's do it. Thank you so much Chair Bugs and good evening Board members. When I spoke at the district's new teacher orientation in July, a group of our first year teachers approached me afterward with a spring in their step and excitement on their faces. They were members of our first Grow Your Own cohort, former MNPS support employees who have trained to become teachers and are now leading their own classrooms for the first time. Grow Your Own is a partnership we have with the state of Tennessee and four educator preparation providers to help MNPS support employees become licensed teachers. And tonight, we're honoring the first two groups of employees to take that significant step. Grow Your Own helps support employees get a master's degree at no cost to them from Lipscomb University, Nashville Teacher Residency, Relay Graduate School, or Tennessee State University. They earn licensure in a hard-to-staff content area while also earning an endorsement in exceptional education or special education or English language learning. Participants also commit to working as a paraprofessional in an MNPS classroom during the first year of the program and then commit to working as a classroom teacher in the district for at least three years. This is a wonderful way to develop teachers from within our own ranks. These are employees who have already served our students in schools with great dedication and now feel called to do the same thing in a different role. And I'm grateful for their commitment and looking forward to seeing their impact in the classroom. Because we all know just how important good teachers are, tonight, we have with us several members of that first cohort of Grow Your Own participants who are now in their first year in their own classrooms, as well as the second cohort who got started this month and are serving as paraprofessionals for the 2022-23 school year. Please cohort members, come up as I call your names and we'll take a big picture of the first group and then we'll do the same thing with the second group. So if you hear your name called and you're here, please come on up towards the podium. Lejean Hamad, Rachel Cunningham Espinoza, Lakisa Dobbins, Jared Fryherfer, David Gajda, Anita Goodcase, Lisa Shadrick, Mary Beth Shaw, Daniel Schust, Angelia Slater, Janet Smith, Erica Spann, Nikki Steen, and Ashley Straw, and Samuel Williams. Please give them a round of applause. Congratulations to you all. We're proud of the work you're already doing with the students you're serving on a daily basis. If you would, please come on up here and I would like to love to get a picture with you with myself and our board chair.
Thanks for being here, y'all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you so much.
Before we take this picture, can you tell us what your role was before and where you're serving today?
Let's start. I was a tutor and I'm a third grader. I started off as a substitute teacher, then transitioned to paraprofessional, and now I'm a little school classroom teacher at Harris Hill Special Education.
I was a parent at Stanford Montessori and now I'm in a first to third grade blended classroom.
Awesome.
All right, let's give them a round of applause. All right, so now let's take a moment and recognize our second cohort. Again, please come up as your name is called and then we'll get a big photo like we did with the first group. So if you're here, jump on up and be proud to represent MNPS. Jill Barber, Lindsay Cauldron, Onyx Donaldson, Devin Fisher, Nadia Francis, Rayga Gattas, Emily Gott, Destiny Hogans, Arena Ibrahim, Renique Jackson, Jocelyn Jordan, George Kotawala, Donna Parker, Jerika Patterson, Jeannie Piper, Victoria Ross, Lisa Varley, Koyoko Wade, Linquoya Wade, and Regine Wells. Come on up and y'all, let's give them a round of applause. All right, if you can join us up top and we'll get another photo. And as you walk and be thinking about what you're going to share with us about where you've been and where you are now.
Thanks for being here.
My name is Donna Parker and I'm at Gower Elementary. I am in a pre-K classroom that is a general education. We have 17 students present and they are quite a handful the past two weeks, but they've shown lots of love and encouragement.
I'm Rava Bhattas. I used to be a parapro exceptional education in EDP and now I work math teacher for seventh grade in JEP.
I'm Renique Jackson. I started off as a math tutor and a parapro at McMurray Middle School. Now I work at Antioch Middle School as a sixth grade math teacher.
I'm Jeannie Piper. I came from a permanent sub at Lockland Elementary. I'm now working in English seventh grade at Stratford.
Congratulations.
Feel good.
Thank you all.
Both Dr. Battle and I have pre-K students in MNPS right now, so thank you. All right, thank you again for that, Dr. Battle. Now we'll move on to another update. We will hear a bit from you around the equity roadmap and have an athletics update.
All right, thank you again Chair Bugs and Board members. Before we jump into the director's report, at the request of the board, I wanted to give a brief COVID-19 update. So last week, Monday through Sunday, there were 104 confirmed cases among staff and 473 among students. Of course, as much as we'd love for the virus to go away, it appears that it will continue to persist in such a way that we have to deal with it as a function of our normal operations and lives. The good news is that we've come back better than normal. I want to thank our school nurse program who is doing a great job of tracking and reporting these cases. And you can get weekly reports by going to the COVID-19 tracker on our website. We are keeping that updated. Also, I'll be giving the board an update on staffing as soon as it is available in the coming days. But right now, all of our HR resources have been focused on processing new hires, transfers, and payroll to ensure everyone is paid for their hours worked, but we will be providing additional updates to the board as it is made available. Now, the school year is off to a great start and we had some wonderful news to share last week that MNPS is a Level V T-Voss district for the first time. I cannot tell you all how so proud I am of the teachers, our students, our staff, our parents, this board, everyone who pulled together under difficult circumstances to make this happen. And you've heard me share on multiple occasions that while we've been at this thing for a few years, last year was probably more complex and complicated as we return to our all-in-person learning environment and shifting in lots of ways. There are some key highlights that I want to include to make sure we're all aware. So again, Level V district, we have Level V's in system-wide literacy, numeracy, and literacy plus numeracy. Okay, I'm going to say it again. So overall Level V, in addition to that, a system-wide V in literacy, numeracy, and literacy plus numeracy, which we've not had since sometime before 2015. We have a district-wide social studies grade of four and our score has not been that good since 2016, which did not include grades three through eight. Our lowest system-wide score is for science and that is a Level 3, meaning it was the expected level of growth. So Level 3 is expected level of growth, Level V is significantly above evidence-wise the level of growth of our students. Of our 132 district-run schools, there were 42 Level V composite schools, which represents over a third of our schools. There were 51 schools with a 4 or a 5 composite and 86 schools with a Level 3, 4, or 5, which is expected annually. That's great news on the academics front. But here at MNPS, we serve many different needs and interests of our students and they overlap to create a well-rounded student and adult-to-be. We are excited, we are inspired by this growth and what we've been able to achieve with our academic growth this year. We know it will continue to be our focus, to improve, to know where we are, but don't stay there, and we will not stop. We will be relentless until we get all of our students where they deserve to be. So the work continues, but we celebrate today the growth of our students across the content areas as already shared. So again, we serve very different students, many different students and their needs and their interests, and we want to ensure that we're developing well-rounded students and adults-to-be. And that includes our social-emotional learning and it includes our extracurriculars and athletic programs. So I'm going to provide an update for you around where we are with athletics as well to respond to those interests and talents of our students. This year, we are expanding our elementary sports offerings available to students with a focus on equity, ensuring that all quadrants are represented, transportation is provided, and necessary insurance is covered to give each student the opportunity to compete if they choose. This year, we're going to be expanding our offerings in cross-country for the fall and soccer for elementary students in the spring. We are excited for these sports clubs to get going and again, we'll provide them free of charge to participating students. Starting this fall as well, we are excited to have 33 elementary schools participating across country. This is near and dear to my heart as someone who went to college on a cross-country and track scholarship. I know the value and benefit of this endurance sport that strengthens the body and mind and the great thing that as soon as you are able to walk and run, you're ready to start training for this sport. This year, meets will be held at Two Rivers Middle School where students will run two half-mile loops to complete the one-mile course. Practice starts on September 10th with the cross-country championship on October 1st. Again, I want to commend our athletic department, our leaders in Roosevelt Sanders and Mark North for your vision and execution. Y'all, this is the first time that we've had sports and sports clubs available to our elementary students. So we're starting early, providing them what they need free of charge. Now, we also know Nashville is a major league soccer town now and I think it'll be great to have as many of our schools provide an opportunity for students to play this spring. We'll be surveying principals in January to get interest for participation with a March 2023 opening of the season that will be held at the Dale Soccer Park on Saturdays. So no longer will families have to go out in the community and figure out how they can connect with soccer. They can engage and be a part of their soccer club at their school within their quadrant. We'll provide, again, transportation. The support of is also providing the soccer equipment and the shirts for all participants to be a part of our spring soccer for elementary students. We will also be adding two sports to our high school athletics portfolio. Unified track and field is a partnership between the TSSAA and Special Olympics of Tennessee and joins students with and without intellectual disabilities. It was added as a TSSAA sanctioned sport in 2018 and last year, White's Creek Student Athletes won the 100-meter long jump and finished second in the shot put. The team finished second in the sectionals and qualified for the state meet. This year, we are expanding our unified track and field programs and expect eight to 10 teams to compete. Now, in addition to that, I told you we're adding two sports. In partnership and with the support of the Tennessee Titans, we're also adding girls' flag football this spring. We will be one of a few school districts with girls' flag football and have more teams participating than any other school district. 15 of our high schools plan to offer girls' flag football and are gearing up for the inaugural season. So that is huge out of the gate to have 15 schools have interest to field a girls' flag football team. We're excited. Now even possibly more exciting and in alignment with our equity conversations that we've already had today and that we'll continue to have as we move throughout this board meeting, one of the issues that has come to our attention over the summer has been that some of our students are not eligible to receive healthcare coverage and because of this can't participate in sports. As one of our core tenets is to identify and eliminate inequities, I've had our athletics team work on a solution to ensure no student is turned away from sports because of their lack of coverage. The contract with Scholastic Insurance is on the agenda tonight for the board's consideration. Lastly, as a reminder, we will continue to provide additional updates as needed as we continue to enroll students, hire staff, and fill our vacancies. We're extremely thankful for a smooth opening to the school year and all support of teams and schools will continue to process and update information in our systems to keep us moving in the right direction. But again, with regards to athletics and this insurance, we are opening doors of opportunities for all of our students regardless of their ability to have insurance to participate. Now, at this time, I would like to invite Ashford Hughes up to the podium. Ashford serves as our Executive Officer of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. He's going to provide a brief update on our equity roadmap. This is not the first time that you have received an update around our equity roadmap from Ashford. He is back to discuss and share some of the progress that has been made over the last year. He will highlight a few key areas of progress and will continue to provide additional updates as needed throughout the year and then the years ahead and in accordance to our new equity policy. So Ashford, I will kick it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Good evening Board Chair. Good evening Board. Thank you for allowing me to come before you this evening. Before we get started, there were two things that I did leave at your table. One was a physical copy of the equity roadmap. The second one was in a partnership with two strong community leaders within Nashville, Mr. Frank Garrison and Ms. Gail Williams, and the Friss Museum, the Vanderbilt Press. For our summer training this year, they awarded me several books that you see in front of you right now. The one that depicts Nashville civil rights history and I'm old to train our educators on how we actually got here, we gifted that book out to all of our executive principals, to many of our instructional leadership team members during the training, and we'll be gifting many of the books to several of our seniors this year so that we have information on inequities and equities and where we're going moving forward. Wanted you all to have that as well. Want to take a quick point of privilege just to recognize two members of my equity team, two of my equity specialists who are here tonight, that the work couldn't be done without them, Dr. Joy Gus as well as Melissa Gordon, two strong leaders on my team. I want to begin to ground us in several things and this quote is one that we used throughout the summer to talk about where we are in MNPS along our journey because we are along a journey. It has been two and a half years since I've been in this position and we have come a long way, but we still have some ways to go. Today, I know I want to realign our vision for equity as the last time I spoke with you was around last school year. An update on our roadmap, where we have been since I last spoke to you and the work that we've been doing to implement the work of equity across the district, but then an update on our training plan, the training that we did for educators this summer and what we're going to be working on this fall going into next spring as well. Always with the mantra and understanding that we're doing now but building towards and do now the work that we already are doing. I want to share a video that really grounds us again in our why this work is important and the work that we're doing, the need for this work within our district.
When the youngster walks into the school, the youngster doesn't check the world at the door and come in with nothing. The youngster brings the world with him or her into the classroom. We talk about racism, we talk about police brutality, we talk about issues of healthcare, we talk about issues of housing and jobs and employment and well, youngsters bringing all that with them to school. And the question is, does the teacher know that world? Undergraduate school prepared that teacher for the generic child, but it did not prepare that teacher for that kid who's just as brilliant but doesn't have the same privilege and doesn't have the same opportunity. If you think about a race 100 meters long, that youngster's not even at the starting line. That youngster's like 100 meters behind everybody else. And now we're saying, but you got to finish with the rest of them. How? But if I got somebody in there that understands why I'm 100 meters behind everybody else, I'm in better position to help close that gap so that now that youngster can make up time and catch up with everybody else and now have an equitable, not an equal, but an equitable opportunity to be successful.
Principal Kofele is a renowned principal, now trainer and educator from New Jersey, but does equity trainings across the country and have been working with him to align where we can also be within our district. Again, reiterating our universal terminology for educational equity, one of the important things that we wanted to do was have the same terminology. What equity is in the Southeast needs to be the same that we depict and articulate in the North. So this is what our term is. You have this in the roadmap, we've talked about it in the past. Again, looking at differentiated supports for our students and this is what we've been working on with our educators, but understanding that equity does not only live within our educators or our principals, it has to be within our divisions of nutrition, transportation. It seriously has to be across everything and every department that we initiate here within MNPS. I want to make sure that we also focus on our universal focused outcomes. These are our universal goals, literacy, SEL, numeracy, and transitions. The equity work that we've been working to institute is also how we uplift and make sure those focused outcomes come to fruition for each and every child within our district. Our work as we have been articulating our equity roadmap is how are we working with everybody to create the conditions by which every student has what they need to meet our focused outcomes. Again, important pieces of the puzzle that we see depicted, diversity, equity, and inclusion, social-emotional learning, teaching and learning, important pieces of the puzzle that I always talk about. We have to have those connected and aligned and we have to be collaborating across departments so that we can see closed opportunity gaps, we can ensure there are improved student outcomes, and we are consistently focused on every student known. I'm fortunate enough to participate with Dr. Battle and members of the senior cabinet as we go on trips and school visits. And Dr. Battle was always asking, what does it mean in your school building to make certain that every student known? And we know that the social-emotional learning is important as well relationships, but we cannot do that at the discretion of not doing and having rigorous articulation of our curriculum. We have to make certain that we're doing everything in order to get that student where they need to be successful. And that is the work that we have been articulating, leading, and partnering with our educators and leaders across the district since we last spoke. Again, wanted to lead you to this framework and draw attention. This framework around leadership, culture, and practice should be common to you now because we hear it in everything that we talk about, no matter when you're in front of the board. You've heard various departments talk about the leadership that they're working on displaying with our leaders, the culture that we're setting for equity, and then the practices, those things that we're doing every day to make certain students get what they need. Again, operating off of a do-now, build-towards mantra. This summer, as we talk about how do we build equitable systems, we've really been focused on the personal. How do we make certain that educators see themselves? As board members, you often talk about implicit bias and how does that show up when we work with students? But also through the instructional leadership teamwork, we have begun to dip into professional strategies to make certain that school buildings and leaders have what they need collectively to make certain that their communities have what they need as well. I want to draw attention to something really important that Dr. Battle again has stressed often from the senior cabinet level. How are we utilizing an equity lens in decision-making from senior cabinet on down? What are we doing to ensure that all voices are heard in decisions? The questions that we now are molding and asking is, once we utilize our equity lens across departments, across decisions, how do we go back and continue to make certain we made the right decision? Did we accomplish what we wanted to accomplish? But that is the work now that we still are creating together with educators, stakeholders across the district, as you all talked about a little bit earlier today. So I want to talk about how we have progressed since we last came together. We often continue to talk about our equity matrix. This was the methodology we used to make certain that where there was resources, things that needed to get to our community, we looked at it through a lens of our schools of innovation, our students with disabilities, our ELL populations, and our economic disadvantaged students. These are things that we've been doing now to make certain that equity is lived and not just spoken of. We talk about our equity roadmap, which we fortunately launched early last spring in preparation for what we were going to do with our professional learning over the summer for a lot of our educators. You hear me talk about quickly our equity pillars of measurement, those areas that we leverage to support our focused outcomes. One of the things I'm going to talk with great joy about tonight is our equity summer professional development and the work that my team did collaborating with other leaders across the district to do something that has never been done in MNPS before. And I would dare say, if you look across the country, not many other, if any, school districts contributed to the learning of our education community this summer as we did. And then I'll briefly touch on Equity Advisory Council, which we continue to work with stakeholders to gather feedback information consistently. I want to talk to you about equity pillars and what those are. These five strategic pillars that are aligned to our focused outcomes. I keep drawing us back to always contain and remember about our focused outcomes. These pillars are leveraged to reach equitable academic outcomes for each MNPS student. We talk about instructional equity, programmatic equity, equitable leadership. We talk about instructional equity, programmatic equity, equitable leadership and operations, cultural competence and a diverse workforce, and an internal and external community engagement. As we define instructional equity, this is how we implement professional learning programs that build teacher effectiveness and make certain it takes into consideration learning styles and cultural identities. The work that we've been doing now, I really want to highlight our literacy reimagined, right? To me, there is no greater thing that we can do within our district than make certain our young boys and girls have access to quality reading instruction. I really believe equity and literacy are hand-in-hand, most important thing that we can do, and we're doing that now, thanks to our great leaders up here that you see today. Programmatic equity, identifying key indicators to remove systemic differences across programs that we've all talked about, you talked about that today. Some of the work that is happening now as we build towards that access to advanced coursework, our GATE program, the EPSO's, and our Academic Magnus, we are doing that work now. I also want to highlight something that our Student Support Services have been working on for this last time. Really, our advocacy centers, our peace centers, and our research centers, focused on making certain that we are providing that sense of belonging, that support for our students that need it right now. Equitable leadership and operation, advancing racial, socioeconomic, and educational practices to display accountability across all departments. Now, we talk about this some in the terms of teaching and learning, but this is also, again, inclusive of nutrition services, our transportation department, school-based administration, those things that we're doing now, district-wide PD for all support staff. We are focused on doing that as well. But also looking at how do we also access, allow our principals to access information to be informed by the student dashboard and empower BI dashboard. One of the things we worked on this summer was having all of our leaders look through data through an equity lens and what that meant for their individual school community. Culturally competent and diverse workforce, intentionally investing in the professional learning of all employees. This summer, it was required that all of our certified educators went through both DEI foundational training, but also social-emotional learning training as well. One of the first times that has happened in our district, to great success. What we have been focused on now is making certain that we provide that professional development to make certain that educators have an equity mindset and equity leadership, and working with our HR department to making certain that we are hiring a diverse workforce. Finally, internal and external community engagement, our stakeholder engagement, really establishing the tools and the guidance that focuses on how do we intentionally utilize stakeholder participation and feedback. The work that we have been doing now, Student Voice Framework across our district, Family University, making certain that the feedback is constant and continual so that we know what we're doing. This is the work that we have been doing thus far. I want to highlight a couple of equity benchmarks that we look at to track progress across teachers, administrators, staff, and support hub. I'll highlight just a few. How will, as a teacher, I leverage students' background and experiences to build bridges to curriculum? Administrators, how will I ensure that novice teachers are mentored? Staff, how will I reflect an equity mindset in my workplace? And for the support hub, how will the support hub attract a more diverse workforce? These are some of the areas that through a lens of equity, we say, how are we measuring ourselves and what are we working towards? Again, building equity leadership capacity. This summer, we embarked myself, Dr. Gus, Melissa Gordon on training all of our certified teachers. But not only us, we recruited seven other leaders that had to be trained a week with us from across Napier, Nashville School of the Arts, McGavick, Overton, Pearl, Bass, and Donaldson Middle School. These seven educators were recruited to be facilitators with us to embark on this journey throughout the summer. These were some of our training objectives. You'll see number one is why you have the book in front of you. We also took our respondents, our participants through the By Design documentary, but also number three, develop an awareness of personal implicit bias. This summer, we wanted to make certain that we focused on the individual during our DEI Foundations Training to make certain that everybody knew how they showed up, impacted a child, impacted a colleague, impacted a family, and what could we do to offer them tools, guidance, and support to make decisions? And this was not in a we're coaching or telling you, this was in we're going to learn together, and that's what made our training so successful this summer. So again, we had two trainings this summer. One was DEI Foundations Training, where we really talked about the terminology, the universal workaround, how do we understand equity within our district? But then we also had a separate training for principals and their instructional leadership teams. Again, forty, almost 4,200 teachers trained, nearly 90% of the eligible teachers at that time trained from June 1 to July 29. That meant we had to have five days of training a week, four sessions in the morning, four sessions in the evening, Monday through Friday, three hours synchronous, and then also a three-hour asynchronous course that really drive in. What was important to me is not only the success of being able to get through those numbers in two months, but the respondents. 97% of participants responded favorably that the content shared during this session was relevant to their role. Essential, as we talk about adult learning theory, this was essential to making certain the training actually had the opportunity to show up in the classroom setting, in the leadership setting. The instructional, the ILT team, important to have principals there with their leadership cohort, looking at data from an equity lens, but also identifying how they can build out equity teams within their own school building, kind of a train-to-trainer model so equity can live with them, because it can't just be in my department, it can't be only in Dr. Bellamy's department, it has to be collectively amongst all of us, and this was how it started this summer. Wanted to provide some quick feedback from some of the participants. I want to highlight from our facilitator, Mark Pete, who's the community manager, Community Achieves Manager at Napier. I felt invigorated, relevant, and valued as I was presenting and after I presented. I felt and still feel like I was making a significant impact on the education students and families across the district. I want to quickly highlight a principle from Donaldson Middle. This training was outstanding. The facilitators were knowledgeable, respectful, personable, and organized. The course was right-sized for the time available, provided opportunities to reflect and share, and met each participant where they were at while challenging them to advance their thinking. This was just some of the great feedback that we got from many participants in the training. This fall, we plan to also begin to train everybody within the support hub. We're also going into the spring, be preparing to train all of our support staff as well in the same DEI Foundations Training moving forward. So as we kind of surmise where we have been over this year, I think back to, again, framing our efforts around the do-now, build-towards. The Equity Roadmap is not a stagnant, you have to do this whole process right now at this point in time, but it is a guidance to how we can work collaboratively and effectively. Some of the things we're doing now, and it will take some time to build out and move towards, but that's how we began to set the equity mindset. Then we looked at establishing decision-making through an equity lens, again, monitoring our growth in our practices. Then we also began to cultivate a growth and equity mindset, elevating leadership at all levels, across all departments for each and every child, but across all departments is really vital, because equity has to live within everybody, and it has to be something that is viewed as important to the role in each department. So how do we build equitable systems? Continue to build equitable systems. One of the things that I will continue to do, that we will continue to do with my team, is to build out an Equity Advisory Council to make certain that stakeholder engagement is top of mind, is essential to the work that we do, that feedback is a must, we will continue to move that forward. We have a clear path that is drawn out, we will continue to work across departments. We have, over the summer, collaborated with various new departments that after taking our training said, how do we get engaged in what you're doing? We want to be equity leaders, we want to build efficacy across the district. So we're in the process now of building equity leaders. If I could leave us with one thing to ask the board to do, serve as equity champions. When you look at and you dive into the roadmap, I know there are things that your school community cares about. It's important that you champion the efforts that we're taking right now in your school community, but also outside of your school community. When you're at other political meetings, when you're at other community meetings, highlight the work that is taking place around equity with our roadmap being a driving indicator of where we can be. The last thing I would say, invite myself and my team out to one of your community meetings, to come and talk with a group of your parents and your teachers, to say, this is where we're going, this is where we're leading to. Utilize your social media efforts to talk about all the work that is taking place. Invite us to send a blurb to be in some of your compliances when you talk or when you send out newsletters. We really need champions. You have already shown the passion for equity. Now it is time that we continue to build the work out. I look forward to coming before you every school year to give you updates, to talk about where we're going, and to talk about how we're getting better and how our journey continues to move forward. Dr. Battle, I will stop there and turn it over to you.
Severingly, and thank you, Mr. Hughes, for that update around our Equity Roadmap. I will now turn it back over to Chair Buck to lead us through any discussion.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Mr. Little?
So just want to highlight, I really appreciate not only you presenting the Equity Roadmap, but anyone who knows you, like your work in the community, your volunteer work, and the work that you do with other organizations. And I think this is needed, my only question, and maybe we don't know, with all of this, how will this impact our kids? And when we look at equity around kids not reaching their greatest academic potential, and how will this serve as a catalyst to get students where they need to be academically, socially, emotionally, and other things that have set them up for success?
I'll start, if you don't mind, Ms. Little, and I'll kick it over to Ashford. As you heard throughout Mr. Hughes's update today, and which is also evident in the training led by our great facilitators, we're grounding this Equity Roadmap in our focused outcomes. So we are extremely clear about what we're expecting to see in academic performance as well as SEO performance for all of our students. This is also why, when you receive our benchmark data, years past, we've used MAP. You've also saw it in our Summit of Data with regards to T and Ready ELC exams, that's why we're measuring the subgroup performance. What we saw last year was literally all of our subgroups grew. We did see significant gains around our students that were economically disadvantaged. We still have gaps that exist across our demographics. And so we're using those focused outcomes as measured by our benchmark assessments as well as our T and Ready suite of assessments to help ground us. We know that those numbers aren't everything. So when we're talking about every student known, that's why we asked that question, that's why we're seeking for that evidence when we're out in schools, so that we can make sure students see that value, feel that expectation, but also the supports necessary. And so when you think about how we're going to measure that, keep in mind those focused outcomes that we have for every student at every grade level, and why we break down that data into subgroups so that we can measure progress year over year. I think Mr. Hughes said it best, we still have a lot of work to do. This roadmap, the Equity Matrix, really slicing that data into those spaces as you've described is going to help us be even more targeted and intentional around the supports needed. So one example to that, when you think about our Accelerating Scholars Program, it is specific to the needs of our students. So we get the question asked often, why these grade levels, why these schools, why the selected students, why this particular content area? That is intentional based upon where students are and meeting the measure of our equity definition of giving every student what they need when they need it. And so that's how programmatically we're aligning what we're sending our data to our response, and making sure that Tier One level of instruction is strong, hence MNPS, our Literacy Reimagine work, but also the ways in which we respond to those individual needs of our students. Ashford, you might want to add something?
You said it all. You addressed it all.
Any other thoughts or questions?
I just got, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mrs. Masters.
Thank you for this work. I have a question about the stakeholder groups that were engaged, and what stakeholder group represented the LGBTQI population of students and their needs?
So the stakeholder groups that we engaged with, one, teachers, some parent groups, parent organizations. We did work with some students, some students were internal to MNPS, some students were in the community. If I had to call out right now, which one represented that particular demographic? My work with the LGBTQ chamber and some of that communication was one stakeholder group that we worked with, but specifically for our students. That is a work in progress that we continue, and that's why the stakeholder engagement is continuous. But we are working with trying to get in front of more student groups and making that population, and every population, particularly students with disabilities as well, become more seen and visible in these conversations.
And then what were the stakeholder groups that represented our immigrant populations?
Oh, various teams speaking. I know Molly Hedgewood and her department helped set up several meetings. I can get you a list of all those groups that we talk with and that we continue to talk with, members of Turk, Connection, various stakeholder groups, many of the families. This summer, we talked with several of the families as our training was at Glen Cliff, talked with students and families in that community as well, that represent my ELL population, and it's still ongoing, the stakeholder engagement will not quit, that is part of what the roadmap dictates. So we will continue to be expansive and get in front as many groups as myself and my two coaches and our team are able to get engaged with.
Okay, thank you. You know, I do see a lot of amazing work in here. I'm looking at the Common Language and finding, you know, a lot of information about racial inequity and institutional racism and white privilege, which I'm very appreciative of. I see a couple of references to sexual orientation and gender identity, no references at all to gender expression. And so I just want to be sure that we were being mindful of all forms of equity and diversity, and that we're bringing in all of those stakeholder voices, just so that we truly are, we're being true to our every student known mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elrod. Thank you. Particularly in response to our equity conversation that we had during governance, forgot the word for a second, I apologize. I want to make sure that we are actually measuring and benchmarking some of this information, and I'm curious of how we're doing that. So an example would be on Slide 20, we had the Equity Benchmarks used to track and measure progress, and I think they're good questions and necessary and needed to particularly start this new process and kind of initiate it, and also dive deeper within it, within all of these subgroups. But how are we asking these subgroups, whether it's teachers, admin, staff, or the support hub, how are we asking them to do this? And then how are they measuring it, particularly because we're asking them to like identify certain things? Are we, how are we measuring what they thought was going to happen? Did that happen? What were the outcomes? And then how can we change course for the future to better this?
So I think as airline before, we really are at some of the early onset of establishing and making our way through a lot of that. That's why the stakeholder engagement with teachers, with educators, continues to be important. But every time that we do have our sessions, whether it be coaching, whether it's through MTSS, we continue to find ways to say, this is what we're looking towards. We all talk about SEL and that sense of belonging, but what does that look like across our school community? Long story, we still are working towards those to be more definitive, but right now, with our engagement, this is where we've landed, and where our educators, where our community says, these are important measures to us.
And is that the Equity Matrix as we... As we, can you give me a definition of what that is and how that's different than the roadmap?
Ms. Hughes, go ahead. I'll let you respond. Well, our Equity Matrix is our decision-making tool when it comes to resource allotment. So when we, so for instance, when you think about moving to a one-to-one technology district, how did we prioritize, where do we prioritize and get to those resources first, and in which order, based upon need? When you think about our transition to fifth grade back to elementary school, we use that Equity Matrix. Where is the greatest need? Who needs what, when, and where, in alignment to all the other complexities that exist? So that is our decision-making tool with regards to how we deliver upon resource allotment across all of our schools.
And is that only used within the support hub, or are there plans within this expansion? Because there is so much work to be done. Is there plans to expand that matrix and to tailor it within individual quadrants to schools and so on?
Yeah, so we are very transparent about the matrix. We've shared that, of course, as you can imagine, with our leaders and our teachers, so that they know when to expect. What, it does differ depending on what the resource is, when we're looking at the academic performance, the SEO needs of our students and our families that we serve. I believe it's also discussed in the DEI training as well, which all MNPS team members will be participating in. So yes, the plan is there, we're transparent about that, we're sharing it with them, so they know what to also expect with resource allotment as well.
I guess my request would be, as we get to our budget times, and we talk about our school-based budget, that there's a review over that information and these questions that we're asking to measure the progress, as we discuss individual things within their school-based budgets, since it's a newer practice for us, just to make sure that it's more institutionalized.
Yeah, thank you for that point. I think it's important to note that because we have been a student-based budget, budgeting district for so long, this is really the way in which our schools budget their investments as well. When we think about their allotment for student-based budgeting, it is based in equity. When you think about the funds that have been spiraled to our schools for Esther investment, that also is based in equity in our Equity Matrix. So of course, we had to all learn what that looked like to know exactly how to use it, but then how to allocate and track their return on investment.
All right. Mrs. Pupo Walker?
You know, the board tonight discussed an equity policy. I think we, as a district, are trying to figure out how we get there from a governance point of view. And so I continue to sort of struggle with, how do we see at the 30,000-foot level, if we're looking at our focused outcomes? If I wanted to look and say, okay, on this particular focus outcome, what does equitable progress look like? How are we defining it? What is the goal year to year? I don't feel like I have insight into that. I mean, I know what they, they all, I mean, I know what our focus outcomes are, and like how we define what we're working on, but I don't know how we would define equitable outcomes for each of those. And so that's just a question I have. But really, I have a question for you. So if you, if I were in this seat, which I won't be in a year from now, I would love to know, what does a win look like for you a year from now? I think we've done important work on defining our terms, identifying appropriate trainings, getting key staff in place. Like for Ashford Hughes, head of this whole shebang, what would victory for you look like a year from now? What would be some big wins for you? Like what are the big rocks you'd love to move in this equity work? And I don't think, like, shifting mindsets is what I'm looking for. I'm looking for tangible kind of results. What would you like to see different in a year from now?
Go ahead, Ms. Hughes.
So I would say that instructing mindset shifts, to me, is tangible. I think we have to start with the individual, right? So what a success would look like for me is that, one, we finish the training for everybody at the end of this year, right? And we have that complete, and we can say, we have that continuum, not just the training, but now we have next, Section Two setup for you as well. I think what a win will look like for me also is that everybody that has the roadmap document understands it, can look at it and cite the principles that are in there, and they see what they're building, how are they looking at the data that they see, their students through the lens of those principles, and the equity lens, right? Does every school have a equity lens document that they make decisions based off of? Is everybody looking at decisions through that lens? That is something, when we talk about shifting things, I believe, without trying to move the Titanic in one year, I think those are tangible measures of success that we can see to say, we're moving in the right direction, building towards something else.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Gentry?
So I'm gonna be the big bad wolf today. So we're in year three, right? We're going into our third year, having conversations around this equity roadmap. And Ashford, you and I have lots of conversations about this, and texting back and forth, and I have the honor of doing this work in a healthcare system, and I know it's hard, so I'm not trying to minimize it. But I just want to pull the thread some more on Ms. Pupo Walker's comments. What I would expect is that we've trained, there's a documented roadmap, that something about those school improvement plans is different, right? So that I don't look at these on Slide 20 as benchmarks, I look at it as the questions I should be asking as I'm preparing my lesson plans. My benchmarks are where my students are today, whether it's the number of times I have to send them out of a classroom from an SEL perspective, or the number of times, or what their scores, and how they're engaging as a student. Is that student who is part of one of those underrepresented or traditionally marginalized communities, is that student more engaged? Have I shown up differently in such a way that a student who may identify differently from a gender perspective, or from an immigrant community, or English is not their primary language, has that student shown up more? Has that student engaged? Have I reached that student? Have I shown up in such a way that I've created a space where that student feels seen and is engaging? So those are the kinds of things I would like to see us measuring. Student engagement, not just academic outcomes. Are my parents coming to PTO meetings now? Because I've got an environment in my school that is a bit more welcoming and a bit more acknowledging of the cultural and differences that they bring into the space. And so I think that that's what I hear Ms. Pupo Walker asking, and where I think that we've got to get to quickly. I understand that building this was the long pole in the tent and setting the foundation, doing that, sort of that stump speech, right? You've got to go and engage the stakeholders internally and externally about this is the right thing to do. I think we've got to find a way to now fast-track it, that we can't come back a year from now and our win be that everybody understands the equity roadmap, or I've trained and I've done 2.0 of DEI training, which I'm going to get on that in a second. So I think for us, it's what, where, what should be lighting up on our dashboard because we now have an equity lens? What should be different? What should be shifting? What's the shift in the atmosphere? What's the shift in the data now that I've done this education, I've set this framework, I've set the expectation, I've engaged people internally and externally about this work I'm trying to accomplish? One of the other things that would caution us again, because this is, and it may just be a personal peeve, I may be the only one at this table that feels this way, is this phrase, DEI training, because I don't know what that is. People call me all the time. I do the education strategy for the, all of ACI, yay, in this DEI space, and they call a lot of the time, they say, we want DEI training for our team. I'm like, I don't know what that means. So I would just ask at some point, and you don't need to enumerate it all, just to see what has been that training to get to us a shift in mindset, to help people understand how they're showing up in the classroom? What are those courses? Has it been lectures? Has it been readings? I feel it's been a little bit of all of that, but I like to put a name to it, to see what it is we're trying to accomplish. Because DEI training is just a big bucket. And so I would, I would appreciate understanding specifically the trainings and presentations and texts that we have employed with our teachers and administrators to, again, get to this shift in mindset, but also get that buy-in and get them to better understand, again, how they are, how we're showing up, either for our colleagues, for our parents, for our families, and for our students, that may be impacting their ability to show up themselves and engage in a way that they get the outcomes that they really want. I mean, I think it's, we talk a lot about the outcomes we want to see. We've got to be mindful that our parents don't send their kids to us just because there are things that they want to see as well. So I think it's so that we get the district and all of our students to the place where we all want them to be. So I guess I'm, to sum it up, just something a little bit more tangible and measurable and concrete. So again, I would, I would argue that what we have in here is not really benchmarks. They're guiding questions to get teachers to better lessons plans, to get administrators to set better goals, to those school improvement plans to look different. So something should show up differently in those spaces as a result of asking those questions. But the benchmarks are what the data is saying to us today, whether it's T-VAS or other, you know, concrete testing scores, or whether it's the, what do we call those? The MAP scores, but there's the other assessments we do of the culture, the culture type assessment.
Panorama survey.
The panorama surveys, all of those things should start to look different if everyone is engaged at the level that we want them to be engaged.
So if I could, thank you for that, Dr. Gentry. The one thing that I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge right here is our hyper-focus around our focus outcomes. We're extremely clear about what we want to see in outcomes for all of our students around literacy, around numeracy, around them showing up with attendance, and what that change was, and what it's going to take to get them there around our SEO, particularly around our five competencies that we want to see, and we're specific around age and grade of student, what we expect to see and would like to see for every student. That also includes transition plans. We want to know from tier to tier, as students are transitioning, what they are aspiring to accomplish, what their families are aspiring to accomplish, and how we can be responsive to that, so they stay on track and on a path towards success. This is also why we launched the personalized student dashboard, to your point, to make sure that we're moving in a space of two-way communication, so not just that hard data, right? But also what it is that our parents aspire for their students to achieve daily and year over year. And so we ground everything in our focus outcomes. We're in the process of identifying those leading and lagging indicators as well, that will point us in the direction if we're on track, off track, so that we can make those adjustments. But everything that we do has to lead back to improvement around those focus outcomes. And yes, there are lots of things we can measure, but we were very clear around moving the needle right now with literacy, numeracy, attendance, our SEO, and our transitions for our students. We'll continue to slice that data, make the adjustments as we need to, but through equity mindset, understanding that what our kids need might vary based upon where they are and getting them across that threshold. But that is the grounding measure within our equity roadmap, and that's what we're bouncing our success up against, particularly a year from now and years from now. And those focus outcomes could change in the future, because our kid, we believe our students will continue to grow and learn, and so that will force us to continue to shift to make sure we're being responsive.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Little, Ms. Tyler, and then Mrs. Bush.
I just wanted to highlight also, Dr. Gus, I think when I go back to this and look at, that's why I asked about academic achievement, because when I think about measurement, it's, it'd be hard to measure engagement from year in and year out. But I, the reason I'm excited about this, one, because it's in, it's in black and white, it's being vetted by a board, I'm pretty sure it's been vetted by the community. And I think we got to continue to look at where we are. Like, our success is determined by, you know, are our kids growing? Do they feel supported? I went to United Way, and Ms. Buck helped me out, I forgot the committee. But one of the things that I noticed in that committee, there were so many resources and programs outside of the school system that dealt with social-emotional learning, that dealt with home visits, therapy, and I was like, we are, we're missing, you know, because money is always a major issue, but I think a little partnership and help me out. What's the committee called at United?
For Tennessee statewide, Bright Start, and it's for supporting, supporting families? What group?
And what I would recommend, because I think it's a lot of, when you talk about wraparound services, I was blown away by the amount. And unfortunately, a lot of those wraparound services go underutilized, because no one really knows about it. And so I think with this roadmap and your support groups, it may be, and maybe you guys are already there, but it may be helpful of jumping into some of those meetings, because I think it'll strengthen the current plan that you already have. I just, I think about, and I'm gonna just be candid, like, I think about poor people, whether they're white, black, Latino, Asian, and other, and for a long time in Nashville and a long time in this country, if you're poor, it's like a caste system, and you never get out of it, but you never get out of it, because you're, you're in a place where it may not be enough resources to get you out of the caste system, it may not be enough people who care enough. And in my school days, I remember, if a kid came to school and they had a bad day and it was noted, maybe it was child abuse, and it could be anything that was personable, I remember teachers wanting to hug and love and just let them sit the day out. And in my mind, that was the worst thing to do, is like, sit out, like, that was a day where you need to be hugged, you need to be loved, but you need to also be, like, stay on track and don't get further behind it. So I won't be on the board, but I look forward in a year to seeing the progress. And I think the actionable goals, I think you responded, everybody needs to have this training, it needs to be centered in leadership. If leadership is not bodying, if leadership isn't behind it, it's not going to go anywhere. And so thank you for this presentation, and I just, thank you for leading us up.
Just wanted to bring to light, we are partnering with the Blueprint for Early Childhood Success, United Way, and I serve on multiple committees. Many of my colleagues up here serve on committees, particularly around the literacy piece and the family engagement spec as well. So that is work we continue to partner with the United Way on, to make certain that we are connecting those families with the resources available to them.
And speaking of those immediate wraparound services, the advocacy centers, our restorative practice, and peace centers are that immediate response, because we do have to maximize our instructional time. And so they are staffed with caring, loving adults, who are trained to meet the needs of the students where they are, but it's a very structured timeframe, where we, our expectation is within 15 to 20 minutes, the student is re-engaged back in their learning environment, so that they can continue to make progress on a daily basis. So that's what those advocacy centers and restorative practice assistance slash peace centers are all about, and we're thankful for the collaborations and the partnerships that have allowed for us to have that immediate resource in our schools. Thank you for highlighting that.
All right, Mrs. Tyler, if we could have her on screen.
Yes. So we know that there's some particular spaces where inequity resides nationwide, and MNPS is unfortunately not free from experiencing some of the same problems. We talked about it a little bit during the Governance Committee meeting, but it's, three of the spaces that we talked about were equitable access to and success in advanced academics, discipline disparities, and reducing barriers for students who receive exceptional education services. And those, several of those things, I know it's really hard to tease out exactly how do we get to a point that makes these things better, because there's a lot that goes into it. For example, with advanced academics, you know, a lot of people will focus on, how many AP classes are we offering? How many IB schools, and do we have dual enrollment? And we're looking at that, and that is important, but the work to get into those classes starts in elementary school. And a lot of that starts with being represented in the classroom, and having a diverse workforce that represents the students that are sitting in the seats makes a difference as to how they're going to perform in advanced academics moving forward. And we know that, because there's lots of research out there about that, which I'm sure you're familiar with. Are we teasing some of this information out to those root causes that we can kind of say, we know that there is some causation, we know that there is this correlation between having a teacher who looks like you and doing well and being referred for a gifted program, or being in advanced academics in high school, or those kinds of things? And I know we already track our diversity of our teachers, and that's just one example. But are we looking to get down to kind of those more basic ways of something that you can track? And I know several people have asked this, but I'm trying to get a little bit more specific, because sometimes just looking at a number is not going to tell you how we got there or how we can fix it.
And as you've asked your question, Ms. Tyler, takes me back, and And as you've asked your question, Ms. Tyler, takes me back, and I share this African proverb all the time, and it says, if you want to go fast, go alone; if you want to go far, go together. So part of this is taking the time, setting the right conditions, so that we can have those varied conversations. We alone can't have that conversation at the support hub. We need our school communities who know our students best to have the right knowledge, the right resources to continue to dig deep. You've already heard me share, I share with the principals all the time, know where you are, but don't stay there. That requires us to get to those root causes around the disparities that we're seeing in our data. And so we're having those questions, this is also why we're prioritizing our school visits to our, to our schools, so that we can be side by side with our leaders, asking these questions. Again, setting the right conditions, we just had this very conversation on Monday, you might be shocked of how deep we got real quick into what might be happening and what that trajectory might look like for students if we don't intervene early. So yes, those kind, we understand the need to have those deep-rooted conversations, doing a, doing analysis of what we're seeing in the data, but it also takes the time and intentional effort to do it right. Because we also don't want to diagnose something that is not kind of that symptom to what we might be seeing. So as you alluded to, when you think about, you know, we can talk about increasing advanced academic numbers, right? And that's one thing, but we also want to make sure that we have the staff prepared, we want to make sure the students are on a journey for success so they can actually access those courses. And once they get there, regardless of their grade, we also have to make sure that they're successful when they get there. The last thing we want to do is to have that access, and students feel ill-equipped to really engage and to be successful. And so we're having those conversations. One recent memory conversation is around industry certifications. For, we were measuring our industry certifications, we were making progress, and then we stalled a bit. And we had to dig, and we had to dig. And one of the things we found was that while we have effective and great educators all across our district, we were lacking experience in ourselves knowing exactly what those industry certifications were demanding of our students. And so we stepped back, and we provided the resources and time for our teachers, our leaders, to engage with that content and those certifications, so they had a better understanding of what they were truly preparing students for. That wasn't their fault, it was just an opportunity for us to dig a little bit deeper. Then we have to dig a little bit deeper around those career pathways, right? What's happening in elementary school that's preparing them for middle school, that's preparing them for high school? Our school teams are now doing a significant amount of work with our metro schools reimagined and aligning those pathways. That's why we have to do that. That's why we, I mean, foundational to the fifth grade transition back to elementary school. So yes, there is a fundamental understanding there, the right conditions have to be set. That's why we have likely, and like other districts, have had so many misses, because if you're not intentional, if you're not careful, you'll continue to run into challenges and barriers to moving that equity mindset along, so that we can make those informed decisions to get to those deeply rooted issues that, or challenges, I will say, or opportunities, I should say, that exist with our student population. So we are, we, we fully understand it, we're with you on that journey, but we're also being very intentional, very strategic about how we achieve that holistically. We, it cannot, this equity work and this decision-making process, when we think about our equity matrix, can't just live at the support hub. It can't just live in one school or one cluster, for that matter. And so we're thinking about systems change when it, when it comes to how we go about that work, how we work with our research evaluation and assessment team, asking the right questions to get us where we need to be. So thank you for, like, bringing attention to that. That is near and dear. I think Asher and I both could go on and on and on about that work and our continuous improvement with unpacking and digging deep around how we can set our students up for success as early as possible and keep them on that path as they graduate from MNPS schools.
Have we partnered with any group to help us be tracked now? Like, know that we're working with body. Are they doing any work with tracking stuff like this, help us? Is that going to be part of that?
So we have several partnerships. Of course, we had, we have a fabulous research evaluation and assessment team who leads that work, but externally, we have several evaluation teams. I'll be providing an update for the board this week around our extended learning programs and what we're seeing with disparities and what it's doing for students who are engaged versus not. I think it's going to inform some priorities for us as we move forward. So that is just one of the latest, latest data sets. We're engaging with, I believe, is Brown University, Vanderbilt University. Of course, we have our peer partnership with them, as well as education resource strategies. So we have lots of partnerships that's helping us really evaluate, dig into the data, facilitating these conversations, so we can, we can have the tough dialogue and make the tough but right decisions daily for our students. I keep looking over here.
That's good to hear. And then I have one more question. You talked about that Equity Advisory Committee, and I was just wondering, I may have missed it, it's been a little bit of delay on my end, so I may have missed it if you spoke about it a little bit more in depth. But did you talk about who you would include on that and how frequently you'd meet and what your top, did you elaborate on that anymore and I missed it, or?
I did not. Currently, we have a Equity Progress Committee that consists of different department leaders, different teachers within the school district, extending that out to community. I know successfully, within the mayor's office, we had an Equity Advisory Committee that was looking at business development. We met once a quarter, looking at trends, looking at national indicators, but also looking at, hey, what is unique to our community, to really wrap our minds around what can we do to partner? Because a lot of the equity work does not live solely in MNPS, a lot of things we can't mitigate for. That's why I say you and the board being an equity champion in different circles. As we talk about housing, as we talk about transportation and economics in the city and how that impacts school and the school-based community is vitally important. But it will, we, we do want to extend to more community and have greater conversations. And that will be coming into play here within the next weeks.
Okay. And then, once you have information from, once the progress team's information is, is kind of consolidated and you know what it says, and once you have that advisory committee, what are your next steps after that?
Well, I always want to come and provide information to senior cabinet, to our school community, to say, hey, this is where we are, this is what we're looking into, so we're always communicating the steps moving forward. And then ultimately, how are we looking at progress? Again, as we've talked about today, what does it look like from a school base, from a stakeholder community engagement? But then how do we find the information in the gathering as we come together? How do we find ways to support our educators more, having that information? How do we find ways to support parents and students better with the information? I think oftentimes, we think of only the teacher, the educator, but many times, we don't include the family support system. And that's what the advisory committee will be doing also. How do we look at the measures and the indicators and support families in their effort to get their students to be in line with our focused outcomes?
Great. Well, I would love to hear when you next report back to us. I'd love to hear more about how that went and what steps happened from there to where we are when you next report to us, because it sounds really exciting. And so I really would love to hear about how to continue to move forward with this. So, thank you.
Duly noted.
All right, Mrs. Bush?
Yes. One of the things that happened during the pandemic, we, we had a lot of our I E P students that got lost in, in the shuffle, making sure that their I E P plans were met, making sure that students got that support. So around this framework, the equity framework and the, and the roadmap, how do we change that, that vision about I E P students? I hear we talk about the R E L students, but I'm really highly concerned also about our I E P students and making sure, you know, as we transition with our new teachers and our new classroom teachers and meeting their I E P plans, how does this framework look for I E P students?
I'll kick it to Ms. Hughes. If Deb, anybody else would like to chime in, please feel free to do so. Just for a frame of reference, those students who are served and supported by I E P are the exceptional education students that we're referring to in the Equity Roadmap. And so when we're talking about our subgroup data and how we're monitoring that, we always look at how our exceptional education students are performing as well. The I E P process is more of a, I mean, it's a compliance piece, and I think, Deb, if you want to add this, please feel free to do so. We, particularly over this past summer, we offered extensive amounts of extended school year, thank you, services to students. That is something that I'm very proud of with our exceptional education team, that we are responsive to the needs of our students, and if there are needs beyond the school year, that we continue to offer that. But Asher, please feel free to layer in any response, and of course, sorry, Mason and team, if you'd like to add anything to it, please feel free to do so.
No, just to piggyback, having partnering with Debbie and her team to make certain that we do highlight what are the, some of the areas of focus that we need to change moving forward, making certain that we're getting in front of her department. My department is very big on, very strong on meeting with other teams on a regular basis, so we know what's going on and we can see the shifts that are needed. But it's also important that we hear from families, and oftentimes, that is the reason why we continue our stakeholder engagement, to see if there are issues focused, how do we take that information back to departments and figure out the ways in which we can mitigate the problems or the opportunities that present themselves for our families that we can work on. But I will defer to Dr. Bellamy or Mrs. McAdams, if there's any other way that we want to expand on that.
Thank you, Asher, and certainly I'll let Deb correct me on anything that she'd like me to note here that I don't. I would just call out that, you know, our subgroups in particular, our exceptional education students, can be subjected to almost subgroups within the subgroups. E E students of more affluent families know how to advocate, have more access to resources, and I think it's our job to tear down those barriers, in particular for families that don't know they exist because they don't know the services are out there. One thing I'm particularly proud of here in MNPS is our access to the general education classroom and curriculum. Our percent of students who spend the majority of their day in their tier-one instruction is higher than many other districts that I've worked with in the past. And as a former director of services for exceptional students, I can tell you that that's a metric that we should be proud of and talk more about, the amount of time our students stay in the tier-one curriculum. And so again, this is not going to be an easy fix for this subgroup, just like every other subgroup, in that we have to focus, focus in on their access to the curriculum and their success within that curriculum. So I, you know, I just wanted to call out that one measure that we are fairly successful in, through the hard work of our I E P teams, our, our principals, our special ed teachers, because that doesn't happen without intentional supports and intentional plannings for doing so, the hard work of Deb McAdams and her team. And so Deb, if there's something else that you would like to add that I've forgotten, you're welcome to.
Well, and I, I think the, I think the short answer is that our exceptional education students are at the heart as well of our Equity, Equity Roadmap, so.
All right, Mrs. Poopa Walker?
I just make one quick request. I, I understand federal definitions are subgroups, but can we say student groups instead of subgroups? Sub, the prefix sub means below. And so if we could just say student groups as opposed to subgroups, that's just a personal request.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or statements? All right, thank you again, Mr. Hughes. Thank you, Dr. Battle and team. We will now move on in the same vein of equity, or in that same vein of equity. Nope, we will move on to consent agenda first, and then we will talk about the Equity Resolution and then have a COVID leave for teachers discussion. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
I second.
It's moved and seconded. All, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Passed unanimously. Mrs. Tyler, are you there?
I am.
I want to make sure I'm recording you, okay? Thank you. Yes, vote, your vote on the consent agenda, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, please.
Your vote on the consent agenda, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Okay, so pass, thank you, passes unanimously. Now we will move on to number two, Equity Resolution. Mrs. Poopa Walker?
I don't believe this is mine.
Governance, okay. Mrs. Tyler? Mm, you're so right, my apologies. Mrs. Tyler, you are right.
Yes, thank you. So this is a resolution for racial equity in advanced academics. Whereas, according to Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools' MNPS Equity Roadmap, equity means every student receives what they need, when they need it, to develop their, to their full academic and social potential regardless of their race, nationality, gender, sexual orientation, disability, ethnicity, language, religion, family background, or family income. And whereas, the Board of MNPS supports a challenging curriculum and equitable access for advanced academics for all MNPS students regardless of their race, ethnicity, or zip code across all grade levels. And whereas, an MNPS core tenet is to identify and eliminate inequities. This core tenet is central to guide MNPS towards its signature initiative, the Equity Roadmap and North Star, which is to establish MNPS as the premier large school district in Tennessee and beyond. And whereas, an MNPS core value is excellence, which embodies the belief that all students have high quality instruction and expectations each year in each subject and in each classroom. And whereas, MNPS offers a range of advanced academic opportunities from gifted and talented education in pre-K, elementary, and middle school, to early post-secondary opportunities or E P S O's in high school. MNPS has made progress by placing at least one gifted and talented teacher in every elementary and middle school. And whereas, nationwide, Black and Latino students are successful in advanced academic opportunities when given the opportunity. And whereas, nationwide, teacher race is the factor most associated with gifted assignment for Black students. So much so, that Black students are three times more likely to be assigned to gifted reading programs when previously taught by Black teachers than when taught by non-Black teachers. And whereas, there are undeniable disparities in educational opportunities in advanced academics for Black and Latino students in MNPS and nationwide. White students in MNPS were four times as likely to be identified for Encore in the 2021-22 school year compared to Black students. And white students were two times as likely to be enrolled in an advanced placement class compared to Black students. And whereas, nationwide, high schools that serve mostly Black students offer many fewer E P S O's than racially diverse schools. Further, racially diverse schools, or schools where no single racial or ethnic group represents more than 50% of the school's total enrollment. They tend to have the largest racial inequities in enrollment in A P courses. Data of MNPS E P S O participation in fall 2021 mirrors this nationwide data. And whereas, dual enrollment courses have proved to be a successful method for MNPS students to earn college credit. And MNPS has made progress in expanding access to these and other early post-secondary opportunities at historically underserved schools. Whereas, facilitating deeper understanding of explicit and implicit bias against the brilliance of Black and Latino students requires appropriate communication, professional development, and a commitment from the board, the district, and all school teachers, administrators, and support staff. And whereas, many students benefit when they receive gifted and talented services at school. It helps students develop motivation and problem-solving skills while also developing positive social and emotional skills. Further, students from historically underserved groups who receive gifted and talented services at school benefit even more than their affluent classmates. And whereas, completing advanced academic courses helps prepare students for college and career success, improves access to college scholarships and to college admissions, and passing scores on exams reduces college costs and helps students graduate early. Therefore, be it resolved, that the Metropolitan Nashville Board of Education supports the setting of clear, measurable goals for advancing access to and success in advanced academic opportunities for all racial groups, and publicly measuring district progress toward those goals, such as those outlined in the MNPS Equity Roadmap. And furthermore, it supports creating and adopting a board policy on equity that includes advanced academics as well as equity in all aspects of the district's work.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the resolution as read? All right, do we have a motion to accept the resolution as read? Mrs. Tyler, would you like to? It's okay, Mrs. Tyler, would you like to make a motion to approve this resolution as read?
Yes, I did, I'm sorry.
No, no worries, do we have a second?
Yes, I've moved to approve the resolution as read.
All right, and it's been seconded by Mrs. Tyler. All right, open for discussion? Ms. Elrod, I am so sorry, yes. All right, no discussion, all in favor of this resolution, please raise your hand. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. Thank you, Mrs. Tyler and team, I know the amount of work you all put into it, so thank you, thank you. All right, we will now move on to have a discussion around COVID leave for teachers. Mrs. Tyler?
Yes, so our number of teachers that are out due to COVID remains high, and unfortunately, the state made that law that those teachers could not work remotely any longer. And that means that our teachers who contract COVID after Labor Day will have to use their sick days, even if they're feeling well enough to work. With the CDC recommending a five-day quarantine after a positive test regardless of symptoms, that sets up our teachers to use up to half of their sick days in one go, even if they don't feel too sick to work. And it becomes especially problematic when a COVID-positive teacher who feels fine is out of sick days. Then they'd have to actively lose money from their pay to pay for a sub for them to come into their room. So I'm just a little worried that allowing this policy to kind of sunset means that teachers are going to avoid testing for COVID because they don't want to have to quarantine, and that will unintentionally have created lots more unchecked spread. So have we thought about other ways to be creative around COVID leave that won't break the state law, that will allow us to meet those regulations but still take care of our teachers and don't put undue hardship on them? And I have examples of thought that I had, with some of our teachers who feel well enough to work, complete virtual professional development during their quarantine, and use a professional day for that instead of a sick day. Or if they have to use a sick day, could they do some sort of PD and stipend that would be for the sub day? Just something that helps them not have to use everything up. There, I have a couple other ideas, but I'd just love to hear your thoughts.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Tyler. So are you looking to update the policy, or are you looking to collaborate with Dr. Battle and her team to see about any future recommendations?
So I would love to collaborate with Dr. Battle, because I understand that we are kind of, we don't really have control over what the state said. So I know that we have to let that particular COVID leave policy sunset after Labor Day, the one that we have been using where teachers could work remotely if they felt well.
Sure.
But moving forward, I would love to work with Dr. Battle to find some sort of middle ground that helps support our teachers when they test positive and doesn't defeat all of their sick day if they don't feel sick.
Sure. For my understanding, Dr. Sevier, these would be administrative policy, is this something that the Board has to sign off on, or is this, because we were once using a state issued, a state mandated policy, since that's sunsetting, does the Board have to step in to vote for something, or can that be a conversation that Mrs. Tyler has with Dr. Battle and her team?
I think the answer is it depends on what comes out of that conversation and how that aligns with the MOU that's in place and aligns with our current administrative procedures, and if there's any conflict, or if it needs to get elevated up to the Board level to render a decision on that.
Okay, but so for now, it's not mandated that a policy has to be voted on by us to be enacted?
Well, a Board-level policy, yes, absolutely, but not necessarily like a lowercase policy.
Sure, an administrative policy that goes into it, so, okay. I'm trying to make sure I understand how to.
I know we're required to have it, but my point in bringing it up is that we need to talk about it since we won't have another meeting before the existing one sunsets.
Sure, that's what I was trying to make sure that, when you talk to Dr. Battle, is that something that we have to come back and vote on, or can she develop, can she update or develop, as you say, a little P policy that, yes, okay. So Dr. Battle, it sounds like Mrs. Tyler will be reaching out to you to talk about some suggestions or recommendations she might have, or even questions that she has. And if there's, Dr. Sevier and Metro Legal, if it's that we need to enact a policy, can you find, could you look to kind of find that out now, what the parameters would need to be? And while you're doing that, either Dr. Battle or Mrs.?
I think the policy is what, I mean, we have to abide by state law when it comes to that, so I don't, I don't think, there is, is there a request for another policy is the question?
Certainly, any Board-level policy or administrative procedure would have to be in compliance with state law. So I think it's, I think Ms. Tyler's asking, and I'm not going to speak for her, but I heard her just say that she's hoping to find something that is compliant with statute but is still able to provide some flexibility within the current parameters and guardrails that are in, Ms. Tyler?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good, okay, so.
Sure.
Thank you, okay. Mrs. Masters?
Yeah, I just want to talk about sort of what metrics we'd be looking at, you know, like at what point would we, we think, wow, we have so many teachers that are either, you know, having to use up their sick or vacation days in order to quarantine, even if they're asymptomatic with COVID. I mean, the CDC does still recommend the five days. Or at what point so many teachers are out actually sick with repeated cases of COVID that they've used up all of their sick days? I get, I'm just wondering, you know, what, what sort of metrics would we need to see in order for us to want to come together and support Dr. Battle in creating sort of a innovative, state-complying policy to keep teachers from being in that position of having to pay for additional leave out of their own pockets?
Dr. Sevier, you could help me here. So with this board, with this having been added as a board discussion, we?
It was on the agenda, though.
I actually asked if we could be added governance issues so that we could have this kind of discussion with more than just the board members.
That's what I'm asking, since it was pulled from the.
It wasn't on the written agenda that it added to the agenda.
But still, that's what I'm saying, since it was added, can we have a discussion beyond just the board?
You can discuss anything you'd like, you just can't take any kind of vote upon it.
Gotcha, so this is just a conversation to, so that you can make your suggestions known to Dr. Battle, or you can speak with her after this to make your suggestions known. Mrs. Masters?
I mean, as per our March 8th vote, we, we will have a COVID update as a part of the agenda at every meeting moving forward. So since it's on the agenda, it's perfectly appropriate for us to have this discussion.
Sure, to have a discussion. I was talking about the vote, I want to make sure that I'm understanding what's being asked.
If someone wanted to make a motion, they could, because it's a part of.
Dr. Sevier, Metro Legal, if you don't, better yet, is there a motion for anything to happen, or are we just making sure we're adding suggestions? Mrs. Tyler?
I don't have a motion for anything in particular to happen right now. My concern is that we don't have anything in place.
Yeah, sure.
And so the point of the discussion, the public discussion, is for us to decide how can we support our, better support our teachers after this sunsets, because the state is refusing to do that. So how can we step up? And so I'm not giving an answer, I'm hoping for this to be something we can talk about, including Dr. Battle and her team. What can we do that's within the parameters of the state that helps support our teachers?
All right, thank you, Ms. Tyler. Mrs. Bush?
Dr. Battle, is there anything that can be altered or adjusted in a policy that will allow this to be? I know this is a state, this is a law, right? But is there anything else, any type of room to add anything for the teachers that you can think of that, any, anything?
No, I don't have any recommendations at this time. What we have looked at is the compliance with all of our other, I mean, you know, we deal with flu, we deal with other illnesses as well, and looking at, you know, how we respond to those, those typically fall in the category of sick time. Of course, I think we've been very supportive as a district, as we've continued to navigate, but I do not, given the requirements by law and our own policy, I don't have any recommendations at this time that I can share.
Mrs. Elrod?
May I please get some clarification on what is our current policy after, after the September sunsets? What is, what's going to be reenacted?
So the COVID policy itself is due to sunset after Labor Day.
Correct. And then what will happen after that?
Our normal procedures.
Got it.
And we've, we've used that policy for two school years now, two school years and a quarter, half a quarter, we'll get into September, so we've been pretty supportive as far as COVID leave since, since then. But again, the virtual option, as we're digging into it functionally, will likely not be an option for us after Labor Day. And I would also acknowledge that this also changed for our students. So up until this school year, our students were able to have excused absences or COVID excuse absences. And mark present if they log the attendance and completion form, and that is no longer an option to our students either. So they will also be in a situation, we're talking about chronic absenteeism, I should flag this now, it will have a great impact on our district's chronic absenteeism possibly, given students attendance. I'll also note that it is not an automatic five days.
Abigail, could you please?
I think, I think her air conditioning came on.
Sorry.
Abigail, can you hear us now?
Now I can hear you.
Okay.
It was in and out, and then I couldn't hear anything at all.
Sure. So Abigail, I was just, I was up.
Dr. Battle was talking about how our students no longer can be present, but they get excused absences if they are COVID.
Yeah, so they will not be marked present, they are marked excuse absences, which goes against chronic absenteeism as well. And so all of the policies are shifting at this point, from virtual school flexibility to how we mark student attendance, to our ability to teach virtually, all of those areas are shifting in a different direction.
Do we have, okay, did I continue?
Go right ahead.
Would we have, do we have virtual professional development that's available for our teachers in general?
Our teachers all have the option to use professional development days throughout the year, they have that option already. There are likely some but limited virtual options currently, but our teachers always have the ability to leverage their professional development days throughout the school year.
And is something that could be, if a teacher says, I don't want to use up my sick days, I want to use one of my professional development days because I feel fine and I was signed up for this, is there an amount of time? Do they have to sign up for, or do they have to be approved?
Yeah, there, it just depends, there are guiding kind of principles around all types of leaves, so our teachers are eligible for sick leave, professional development leave, personal leave as well. And if I'm not mistaken, I mean, they have to meet the definition of the leave, but when it comes to professional development, professional development, if you're participating, is professional development or PD day. So our staff, I mean, for years have had access and the ability to leverage those days throughout the school year.
Okay, so if a teacher tests positive on Monday, and they know they're going to be out, well, hold, regardless of how they feel, and they decide they want to do a virtual professional development day for the first day, then Friday, is that something that could happen?
There's nothing that prohibits that as long as they meet the prerequisites for the specific training. And I'm looking at my team to make sure I describe that accurately, yes. So for, as an example, you wouldn't have a first-grade teacher sign up for physics training just for this purpose, right? It has to be relevant to your current role or assignment.
When I would want it to be relevant, I mean, if they, if they're home and they feel fine, why not have them learn something more? That's, I think it could be a win-win situation if that is, if there is something available.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't require any change to our current administrative procedures. Our, our staff has the access to, throughout the school year, to leverage their specified leave days according to the policy. And we are, again, offering, still offering in-person and some virtual trainings throughout the school year, and so those options will still remain available. I mean, that, there will be no COVID check as long as it's not in person for you to participate in those.
Okay.
All right, Mrs. Elrod? You've got your answer. Any other questions? All right.
You and I have a more in-depth conversation about this before Labor Day?
Of course.
Great.
All right, that concludes that discussion. We will now move on to announcements. We'll start, actually, we'll start with you, Mrs. Tyler, and move backwards.
Unfortunately, I've been, I've had COVID myself for the first time in the whole pandemic, so I am not as caught up on my area, my district as I would like to be, so I apologize for anything I may have missed. Take care of yourselves, wear masks.
Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. Do you need a moment, Mrs. Masters? We can, we'll go on to Dr. Gentry.
Okay, I needed some minutes.
Dr. Gentry, announcements? All right, Mrs. Poopa Walker?
So I don't want to cry, so I'm just going to say hello, everybody, we'll miss you. I'll watch you on the television.
Thank you, Mrs. Poopa Walker. Mrs. Bush?
Yes, so just wanted to say it's been an honor to serve on this school board, and it's definitely been an honor to serve our students and teachers, staff across this district, so it's been a great ride for me. This is a chapter in my life, in my book, that is closing, and I have a new chapter that will be opening. So I won't say goodbye, I'll say see you later to the Board and Dr. Battle. Good luck, I'll be praying for you guys, and that's it, I'm done with my announcements. Oh my goodness, all right, I'm out of here, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush. Mr. Little?
Yep, I think I'll add on from Jenny and Fran, to just say this has been an honor, like learning the inside and outside game of public education. Having a son in the district, growing up in this district and serving on the Board has been a dream. Speaking of the, the high school graduations have been heartwarming to see the future of our city and our country walk across that stage and start the next journey of their lives. I appreciate the transparency, the information, and the dedication to grow. I look at our growth and see we're going in the right direction. I was having a conversation with someone in the audience earlier, and I want to be a supporter not only of growth but the academic achievement. And even as we get presented with the Equity Roadmap, that was a great presentation for me to hear before I leave out the door. And so I thank you guys for the camaraderie, the jabs, the hugs, the laughs. Yep, yep, all of that, and just look forward to the future of Metro Nashville Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Mrs. Bush?
Yes, I will be remiss if I didn't say thank you to our parents. They have been a champion for this city, and there are students in the support for this, this Board, so thank you to our parents. I didn't want to, I thought I missed you, so I didn't want to make sure. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. First, I'll go through what we have coming up on District 2. So the Overton PAC is meeting on Monday, 8/29. They're meeting now in person and meeting at Overton in the community room. So again, 8/29 is the first in-person at Overton PAC meeting. They are really excited to have representation from the entire cluster. Additionally, at Overton, Meet the Teacher is tomorrow night from 5:00 to 6:30. And I also wanted to congratulate Antioch and Cambridge as now being included in the Bell Tower in scholarships, that's a really. That's a really exciting increase. I'm really proud of us at MMPS for having this increase of having scholarships available to our students. And so I'm glad that it's been expanded and I appreciate that from the internal work that's been done for that and of course, from Belmont as well. On end note, because I'm not going to cry either, Jeannie, I have really enjoyed getting to work with you. John, I know that we didn't know each other before and it's been such a privilege to work with you. I know that you will still be here, as long as Fran too, and of course, Jeannie. So I have enjoyed working with you and I appreciate learning a lot from you and I've seen so much growth. And so I just want to say thank you and we'll see you soon. And same, of course, to both of you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Elrod. I will echo those same sentiments. We hope that this is a small parting gift, these roses, these plaques to commemorate your time on this board. Please hang it at a prominent place because being a school board member is not for the faint of heart. So thank you for your service to the city, this community, and to our students. Please continue to remain a friend of the district and help serve in different capacities. But with that, I am really excited to share, oh, my goodness, I am so sorry. Mrs. Masters, you go right ahead. I am so sorry.
I thought you were going to let me have the last word tonight. I thought that was what was happening here.
Tusha, I should have.
I assume you didn't forget me. Okay, I have things to report on. On August 12, Parent Advisory Council met with the family engagement team to do some planning for the upcoming year of work. So that work is very much continuing. More to come on that. On August 17, our insurance trust meeting took place. And I just, I wanted to highlight a couple more awards that we got for the benefits we offer with MMPS. David Hines, our benefits director, received a lifetime achievement award from the State and Local Government Benefits Association. And that is, like, one person gets that each year. So like, literally, he got it. And it's because our benefits are awesome. And we also received a Point of Light Award from KLAS Research, which is a health services organization, for our work with Vanderbilt on the maternity bundle. And we have all of these amazing bundles where you can have a baby for like, I don't know, like no money or like a dollar or something. You can get like shoulder surgery or get your hip fixed or, anyway. We've got all these cool bundles that you can take advantage of. So I'm just, I'm always proud to go to those meetings and hear about our good work to support our staff in that area. I also just want to say that like, as part of the consent agenda, we, again, I've got to say, all our athletes can have insurance and can play sports now. I mean, that's like a really big deal. There have been a handful of students who weren't eligible to play because of that. And now they are. So that's, that's an action step around equity right there. Also want to state that I keep checking and maybe driving some people crazy about when our staff are going to get their bus passes. And the work is very much underway. It is going to happen. There's like a whole thing with IDs and being, making it into a bus pass and stuff. It's happening. It's happening. And I'll be shouting about it when that is finally taken care of. I'm very excited that our staff are also going to have access to MTA buses at no cost to them. Also want to say that August 26, which is this Friday, we have a football tailgate party happening at Stratford. Very excited about that. And it is a joint effort coordinated by the school principal, but also with all of the cluster schools, all the elementary schools, middle schools. So definitely plan on joining us this Friday at 5:30 at Stratford for pre-game tailgating. And then also Hunters Lane High School Thursday is going to have their Open House Academy Showcase and annual Title I meeting. And you can find all of these events if you're on the social medias. Stratford's really good about updating Instagram and Hunters Lane's really good about Facebook. So that's just a little tip there. And then I also want to just say thank you to our outgoing board members. I have felt that I have had such open conversation with all of you throughout all of this, even when we've disagreed on the board floor. I've just, I have appreciated the relationships so much. And it's hard. It's like change is hard. But I know, you know, I've gained, I've gained, you know, not only a friend, but a mentor in Jeannie. I feel very fortunate to have you in my life. Fran, the card I gave you says, "You are truly one of a kind," and girl, you are. You are one in a million, an entrepreneur with just an amazing spirit for doing good in your community. John is this amazing father and advocate. And he's the one who likes, wants to get down in the nitty-gritty and talk to everyone about what's going on with their kid and how, you know, he can just get at whatever the issues are for everyone. Just such a caring person. And I, sometimes I've wanted to strangle all y'all at some point, but I'm just so appreciative of your service because at two years in, I know, this is hard. It's hard. You know, it's very rewarding work, but it's difficult work and can be very overwhelming. So, you know, Fran, some of the way you vote, like, I'm okay for that to go away. But that's what I love about it, is we can vote differently and still care about one another. Okay, I've gone enough. Sharon's like, shut it, shut it. You sure? Should I read a poem or something? Okay, okay, I'm done.
I should have let you have the last word, but I just have one quick update. The Pearl Cone Cluster is still moving forward with our community PTO. We had a bit of a snafu with a conversation with the state, but we have found a fiduciary backbone who will help to support, if you want to make donations to any of these Pearl Cone or 37208 schools who do not have PTOs. If a school does have a PTO, please continue to directly submit your donations there. But a couple things between Cockrelow Elementary, Park Avenue Elementary, Jones Elementary, John Early Middle School, McKissick Middle School, and Pearl Cone Middle School. We have a number of open houses coming up. September 1, Jones, I'm sorry, this Friday, there will be, for first through third graders, Fatherhood Fridays. So if you are a man in the community who would like to spend the morning eating breakfast with and reading to young people at Jones, we would love to have you. We'll also be having a breakfast club that begins September 1 with our new principal, Dr. Wilson. So please join us there. Later that evening on September 1, we'll have our open house and Title I meeting from 5:00 to 6:30. August 30 at Park Avenue Elementary at 5:30, there will be a parent meeting. You see this theme of making sure that we are continuing to engage our parents? I love to see it. The Pearl Cone Cluster really is rocking. At Robert Churchwell next Thursday, I'm sorry, this Thursday at 5:00 PM, they will have their open house for families. And the principal will have a Bagels with Bonner event on September 6, so please visit there. One thing that's really special about Robert Churchwell on September 9, they're having a Robert Churchwell Day where they're actually having a living museum exhibit. If you're familiar with Robert Churchwell, Sr., he was, he's made history in his historic advancements in media. And members of his family who are still living will be there live to share stories about the Churchwell name and their family. So please visit that September 9. We are looking to do a number of things in our community. I will continue to share updates. Please visit us in a virtual link and very soon you'll be visiting our website. So 37208, we will not continue to be known for what Forbes and Brookings once suggested. We will soon be known as having the boldest, brightest community members in the South, and I can't wait. So with that being said, our outgoing colleagues, be there no further business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.